Okwama Community is a community in Ugele South, South-South Nigeria, in Delta State. And this community has predominantly been a very quiet community. And the source of livelihood of the people here ranges from fishing to farming and boat transportation. This community has been quiet until the activities of fourteenth March 2024, which eventually put this community on the map. Unfortunately, the killing of seventeen officers and men of the Nigerian Army went round the country. This story went even beyond the country and spread all over the globe. These officers were gruesomely murdered in this community. And the ripple effect of that event has changed the face of what Okwama used to be seen as. Now, all the structures in this community have been pulled down, except for the one we're standing in here, which is the church, the House of God. There's been several narratives as to what exactly happened here on social media, in the papers, on TV and on the radio. There's been several narratives told by different people. But now, News Central Television Town Hall series has arrived live in Okwama Community to hear directly from the people what exactly happened? What led to the killing of the soldiers? What has happened to the people since then? What has been the effect of these activities on the livelihood of the people? What has been the response of the government? What are the people asking? And what is the government doing? My name is Bernard Akede and this is the fourth of a new central town hall series bringing us to Delta State, precisely Okwama Community. Okwama Ado? Okwama Ado? Okwama Ado? That's the response of the people here. As mentioned earlier, we are inside the only standing structure in Okwama Community, which is the House of God, the church where the people used to worship. And we've been told that even this church was almost attacked after those soldiers were killed. The immediate response of the military. On our arrival here yesterday, we found out that most of the people here who still remain in the community now seek refuge inside of this church. But because the church cannot accommodate everyone in the community, there are those who sleep outside. Some say they've had to sleep in the bushes. We've been made to see, we've been shown places where people have been sleeping on mattresses or mats or on the bare solid ground covered in mosquito nets for those who can afford it. Their sources of livelihoods, they say, have been taken away from them. Some farmlands destroyed, some cannot fish. Their children, the little ones here, cannot go to school. Before we start, we're going to look and hear from the people who have been leading this community, the elders of Okwama Community. And they will be the ones to tell the story of all that has happened. We'll be speaking to the elder. We have one of the community members here who's going to run through the interpretation for us for those who do not speak or understand English so that we can also have an understanding of ourselves. So to take the opening prayer.
Honorable Jacob Ake Mojepe from Okwama Community. We are here to start with the opening prayers. There is nothing you can do without God because that's who we believe on. Let us rise for opening prayer. We give you all thy glory, we give you all thy honor. For a day like this, for your children to gather together here. Father, you that bring us back home to our land now. We are rejoicing. We give you all thy glory in thy name, Jesus. Father, today we commit the activities of today to your able hands. Come and take premly control of whatever again to do today, oh Lord. Father, as you bring us here safely, Lord, we commit all the activities of today to your able hands. Come and take premly control. So by the end of the day, we have the cause to glorify your name. Thank you, King of Glory, in Jesus mighty name we pray.
Consider, honorable, before you go, we would like you to please introduce us, introduce the whole of Nigeria, everybody watching, to the elders who are seated here and who have been leading the people before now and even after this situation occurred.
Okay. First of all, I'm going to introduce to you the President General of this community. A person of Honorable James Ogoro Koro. The man standing here is the President General of Okwama Community. Due to the environment where we come from, most of the air school, they are not here. But we are here with some of our elders that pilot the affair of this community. First, I will mention here, Mr. Joseph Okubaye is our elder in the community. We have another of our elder. There are so many seated down here. If you can see the front queue here, there are so many gathered today because they are happy because of what is happening in the community today. But let me mention the community chairman, Wori Branch, that stand and be pilot the affair of this whole from the. Permit me, if I couldn't even measure any other person, but I will mention one of our leader, Urabo leader, that is in our midst right now. Is the President General of UPU Youth Wing Nationwide, not any other person. Ugeiri Blessed. Okay. When you look at the front side, you can see all the elders and the leaders of this community. We cannot mention their all, but with what you are seeing here, you can see that the community is complete. All, both the women, the youth, the children, everyone is here happy today. For the whole world to see exactly what happened and what we are be passing through right now. Thank you, as you are watching, you will get the detail of today's activities.
Thank you so much. Okwama Ado? As you have introduced yourself to us, we would also briefly introduce ourselves to you. We are News Central Television. We're a Pan-African TV from Lagos, but we spread across Nigeria and other parts of Africa. And we are interested in telling the stories of people, ordinary people of Nigeria and even beyond Nigeria so that everybody can hear beyond what social media is saying. My name is Bernard Akede. I may not be able to speak the local language, but the small one where I hear now go speak make when I feel here. Okwama Ado? My name is Bernard, now News Central TV, we for the work. Now from Lagos, now we from Combe. We don't hear everything what they happen for here. We don't see as they be, we see for television, we read for newspaper. People wait get food, they don't see for social media. But we say make it not be said now, only when they tell us now we hear, now we they talk. Make we say for carry our eye, I can't see what they happen, not be so. Now make we come here today. So we want here from all of now, as it take happen that very day, the people wait there around. The thing way happen, not be say, waiting then tell us, now we hear, now we can't talk, no. The thing we don't take our eye, can't see. Now we not say, the next way we want to talk now, Okwama take come. Who will they live for Okwama Community? Who will they come from? It will be the neighboring communities for. We will be visitor here, we not know, so now now go. And the next one know be that. Now we're interested in knowing who the people of Okwama Community are, their origin, how they got here. Who are the neighboring communities surrounding Okwama? Getting here from the waterfront, it took us about thirty minutes via speedboat. For those who are not using speedboats, it takes even longer. But coming here, we got to see that there are other communities aligning this place. Not be only Okwama, now in day here. We get other communities wait there before you reach Okwama, not be so. So we want our elders now, maybe can't tell us, honorable, you please step forward again and then tell us how Okwama came to be? Who are the people that make up Okwama Community? Somebody who can tell us the history of Okwama Community. So we start from the history and we understand how these people came to be here.
Okwama Ado? Okwama Ado? My name is Mr. Joseph Okubaye. We are more to rain now, you all know me here. It's very interesting to look back, to see what has happened in this community before. Okwama is a member of the Awu Kingdom. Awu Sanurabo Community in Ugele Sat Local Commite Area of Delta State of Nigeria. Actually, Okwama, as I was told and from research that we have seen from scholars that have interest in Okwama, shows that Okwama is a member of the Awu Community, Awu Kingdom. And Awu Kingdom, that Awu himself was living with his children among the jaws in Gobri. After Bumodi, Gobri is also an Igbo town. I was told and from research, we found out that there was a day, this. It crosses. And let's see whether we can go back to where we come from, where we used to fish. That's why they have to trace their way back, the route. So if you look at the Awu River, there are lots of Awu towns that are stationed along the river down. Until they got to, until Okwama got to this position, which we call Adera. That is the tributary, the place where the river Fokadou joined the Awu River. They decide that Okwama will settle here so that they can pay host, they can play host to their brothers that are coming from the Awu River eh, to visit their other brothers that will live along this line. That is how Okwama stationed at this position here. That is history as I was told and research showed me. So they stayed here. Where they got here, they've been living here together. They saw this, they went together with this Akubene. On the right side, you get Akubene, you get Obeyama, you get. Before, after that, you saw see Baigulu and other Awu community that settled over there. If you go to the left of this side, you will see Okoloba, you will see Gudubri and you see Ezebri. Before you see Frukama, which another Awu community that settled down there. So this is how we settled in this place.
Thank you so much, elder. Okwama Ado? It's very important for us to know history. A good man will know as people take calm so that we know where we are going, so the saying says. But now we want to know more recent history and that is exactly what has brought us here. Now, from the thing where we read for newspaper, the thing where we watch for television, the thing where we hear for radio, from all that we got on social media and traditional media, we're made to understand that on the fourteenth of March, about seventeen soldiers were killed here in Okwama Community. Different narrative, different stories have been told. We don't hear different things about the people where they said they killed, the soldiers where they said died for this community. And it is what happened after that. But we never hear from the mouth of the people who did stay for Okwama here. The things we have heard are from different sources, third-party information. But now we are hoping somebody from here can give us some accurate information, the story from the side of the people in Okwama Community. Honorable, can we have somebody who can give us firsthand information, what happened, what they knew?
My name. Hello, my name is Steven Esharikoko. I'm a leader of Okwama. Year 2014, I was the head chairman in this community. Okoloba people have to trouble Okwama always. In the first day of the fourteenth of March, Obo repia revoe okiena. Uryoke omaigo jiui. Oni majuro. So omaigo. Okay. Omaigo jiui. Onye Okoa wa genne, ubro bo bemodi nahe, isibotu eve. Ewa kere, iho lewe fu isibotuna. Isoya wa be, iho ri kwa, iro botu bio. Iji kuwi woli soja bio, wishes, eme share eto polu, kiri iho ri ji mule yana devonana. Eh, aiwo runu, kaje ga. Naboga eka didi, ikuwekwa ki ru bene bene. Iwo dudinu, eti, konya ayde tatanai ke me ilida ne forena. So if we, eh, di ra ekunaluwa ne, eh, yaore na ne, awaki se mu ilida na, eh, ti ka isibotu, iera, eh, de kere. Eh, vuriya na, ketya ayde start esasa, kuwekwa kuwekwa kuwekwa, eh, iho re forena, siho kui. So eh, ti, kanyano na wafiya? Koi mota, niyeli.
Okay, like what our elder is saying, say on the fourteenth of March, like exactly what happened, they are just in the community, the women went to farm. Most of the, you can see everybody, farmers, they already went to their farm. Suddenly, they saw two speedboat of the military men, some of them with military comma flag, white song, they are Mofte. They came and according to our tradition, when they came, they welcome they to the town hall and they entertain them, if they drink and cola not. After then, they request for the chairman of the community and his air school. So they went to the farm to call the chairman and some of the air school. Immediately, they, the military men said they are going, they want to go with the air school to Bumodi for questioning. For what happened, we don't know. And we answer, if there is anything they can ask the question here, they said no, they are going with the people, with our leaders. Why the community women say no? Because most of the people already went to farm. The community women say no, we can't carry these people away from us, we can't take our leaders away. True, the way they are dragging, that you cannot take these people away. Suddenly, they saw other two speedboat from the Bumodi side, came some with the same military uniform, some are Mofte. They came, they didn't even get to the shore before they start shooting. They shoot the military and the community women from the river. The three boat that came from the Bumodi, they started shooting direct to the women and the youth that preventing the military not to take our leaders away. They shoot, that is where they kill most of the community people and the military people. That's exactly what happened that on the fourteen. Thank you. And after then, after the shooting, the rest people, the women, some of the men that remaining, everybody started running. That is why, that is the day everybody discharged from the community to the forest. The next day, when the military come to finish the community. So this is what we experienced in the community. Thank you.
So do we know exactly these people that did this, that came to do the shooting initially? Are they from this community? Do we know which community they are from? Do we have any information about these people at all?
Okay, they are not from this community and we don't know them. But all we know that a day to that very day, which is on the thirteenth, because we have been having some issue with our neighboring community called Okoloba. There is a man there called Mr. Patrick Akobekbodomi, that we having problem with him. Since January, and he caught some of our boys, three of them, he killed them. And we reported this matter to the state. We write to the state government. One of the boy that Awu captured that day is still with the Nigerian police Nasa Bati tomorrow with a bullet wound, when the boy escaped from him. So we have been getting this information, we have been waiting for the government to respond because we cannot fight, we don't have power to fight, we have never had crisis with anyone before. So we have been waiting, no response from the government. But on the thirteenth, we have an information that they send the party from Okoloba Community have been recruiting some boys with army uniform that you want to come and attack this community. We got information and immediately we place a call to the HPM Control Ugele Sat, the HPM Control Bumodi Local Government, the DPO Jeremy and the DPO Bumodi, to the Commission of Police, the area command, this message got to them, which is on the thirteenth. So we have not get response from them. The on the fourteenth, this happened, we saw this attack. So it's unfortunately that it didn't happen in Okwama. But all we know that it's a setup against Okwama Community. Thank you.
So let me just clarify again, you are saying that this was a setup against Okwama Community?
Yes.
That that shooting on the thirteenth, on the fourteenth, the killing of the soldiers and also killing of some Okwama people was not done by the people of Okwama? That is a setup by another community?
Yes.
And you have complained this, you have laid this complaint to the appropriate authorities?
Yes.
Okay, now, before you go moving forward, we know that there is no justification for killing a human being, whether it's a soldier or a civilian. Soldiers are meant to protect the people, even me, my papa and a soldier before himself died. And they are meant to protect the people within the country, also outside the country. So the killing of soldiers is a huge crime in any country, in any community. Again, the killing of any human being is a crime, but the killing of soldiers is a huge crime. And that retaliation from the army, from the Nigerian soldiers, now because they killed their own people, now make they come fight, right? We know that you cannot take actions on top. It happened, as you have said, it was not the people of Okwama. But now we've come to see the ripple effect of what has happened. We came here yesterday and we've seen that different things have been destroyed. We want you to tell us the effect, the resultant effect of the killings of the fourteenth. What exactly happened after that, when the soldiers came to Okwama Community? Eh, what did they do? Who did they meet? What did they destroy? What exactly did they do in this community when they came the next day to retaliate?
Okay, thank you very much. When they came on the fifteenth, after the incident of the fourteen, or the fifteen, when before the military came, everybody, the remaining people have already run away to the forest. They didn't meet anyone in the community and there is nobody that asked question, what happened? Why this, there is no question from them. They decide to do whatever they want to do. That's exactly what happened. Okay, they came that on the fifteenth, like the story that, because we just returned few days ago back to this community. When we come back, we get to see that nothing remain in the community except this church, this church building, Saint Peter's Anglican Church. This church was built since nineteen oh three. The same thing with our primary school, but we don't know what come into their mind, why they left the church. There is no building remain in this community. The primary school, they finish it, destroy it. The health center, destroy it, the same to the secondary school. So this exactly what happened here. We didn't came back to meet anything except from this church. Our water, our water tank, they destroy everything. The people don't even have water to drink. There's our transformer, I be destroyed, I be taken away. Our sunproof generator, I be taken away. They have destroyed everything we left with the village on the fourteenth, when we left the village, to today. We come back to meet nothing in the community.
Now, after the destructions, we came here yesterday, first time, and we have been able to go around and see and we can see some of the people here. Some of these people told us that they've had to live in the bush. Some of them have been sick according to what they told us. So we want to know, we cannot ask everybody, but we will ask maybe two or three people to come out and tell us their own experience since then. That's on the fifteenth of March, on the fifteenth of March. And we are now in May, that's two months ago, just about two months ago. So we want you to tell us, and then we have two or three people also to come and tell us how the people have been living since that time, where have they been staying, how have they been feeding? What are the conditions that they've been living in since that particular time? You give us what you know about this person of all and then we'll hear from the people directly.
Since on the fourteenth to date, when the people flee into the forest, there's a big suffering upon my people. There's no food to eat, no water to drink, nowhere to sleep. That is the reason why, if you check some of the paper that I've already, well, we sent to our senator and the House of Rep, the people that died in Okwama is listed there. In the forest, we lost about fifteen persons in the forest because of, some of them mosquito bite, snake bite, lack of no food to eat. The children, most of the children, through fever, different sickness, they suffer a lot for the period they spend in the forest, they suffer a lot. So I will call some of the community people that live in the forest, maybe one or two so that let them tell us their experience by themselves. Thank you. Okay, so you can hear from Mr. Suleman.
Salaam alaikum. Sunana Suleman Mustafa, na bitu Gerizaria. Shaka na Ashiri de uku, niki agre Okwama yezu. De nide yarana, de matana guda bio. Da abona yaba arana na, gaskia mojito se. Da abona yaba arana na, matana guda bio, hario bongane ko guda ba, de yarana guda uku. Abuna, gaskia na shawu ya, adaji, ah, water guda, de kwanaku ku yezu. Da bena nikke sou, tulubu, wallai, kajito se bawa alla. Da abana kike yezu, walla, walla, ni muslimine kuma na shakomi, wallai, wallai. Imba ke yahve geringaba, wallai dunadela era, wallai bazanyan yuma kapab. Da abuna nikke sou, ke sou ra ra, abu bangade chow anajiranga. Da Okwama ngai, geringade kike gani, sundada awanga, basu shawu hala, basu iwa ba da, basu ikuomi. Sutogida, suchi de yarusu. Ah, gerina da da kira Okoloba, kuna de wanishego mutu angera na da na kira Patrick, wallai, mutuna. Ke shkulu neki kache mutani auroanga, kuma, kunji soroshi, geriwa de basi, kuomi ba, chino kuso, kumtochi. Ku kache sou, ku ya bu, ku chiama na sou, ku u ede kuke gardama. Do abu ba de kuke yi, wallai nasaya, amose ala na shakomi, ala basese, basese yamuku ba. Sade, kuzo kujarangera, ni de matana guda bio na, sena gani sou, sena ze yabi, imba akaba be yabi ba, sajimuku.
It's interesting to know that it's not just the people of Okwama who stay here, who have been affected. This is somebody who is also, he's a visitor to this community but stays here, he's a northerner. So it's not only Okwama people who stay here. You have visitors, you have people from other communities who have all been affected equally. That's what we want to find out.
My name is Najule Toka. That be my name. Since we start this running, I inside bush we de. We de suffer for bush, naughty to shop, no clothes. Even that yesterday where they come, I nicked it yesterday. I wash this shirt because naughty, naughty day. So we de side bush, naughty to shop, food not there, children they sick, we serve they sick. Our children, they suffer for hungry. Inside bush we de, we not de see anything, we de fall at this, ma, ma got eh, tree, now we de bring ma got with the shop. So that was have, now they benefit us. So our people now, many of them died throwaway, men and women, children, they never see some. Some see they side bush, what a, that, we not know self. So we see they find that today, we never see them. So we de beg, God may say make it come, I beg, make it come help us. This, our neighbor here village, when it trouble us, make they come talk to them, make they leave us. Make they come build our community for us, oh. No food, do naughty, naughty, oh. We de beg, eh, Sharif, oh, make come build our community for us. Fat eh, 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 tulubu, make it come to our aid, make it come build our, our, our community for us. Because we not do others people, naughty, naughty, we not do them anything. You not feel they have trouble, go come, they come come shoot hand for your, you not go feel leave that person. So I beg, make God may come to our aid, make come help us, oh. So I beg, make government come to our aid, make come help us so. It is us name. Amen.
Thank you. We want to hear from one more person. I'm told that the barista is around. But before the barista, let's hear from one more person who has been affected. Tell us your own side, where you were when the thing happened? How it happened for you? Where you don't stay since that time? Where your family dead? How many don't they survive? All since that time?
My name is Jonah Resident from Okwama Community. Since on the fourteenth of that March, when this incident happened, we don't know anything about this incident. We are, that is, is surprising to see what happened on that on the fourteenth. So after that on the fourteenth, and when the military men come to the community, on the fifteenth, on the fourteenth, we run out from the community to the bush. And from the bush, we stayed the bush to today when we are talking now. So what we are seeing now, with the government, we think we have government and we are pleading, me and myself, Jonah Resident, I'm pleading to the government. I plead it to the governor, our king, our responsible, our responsible people. We are pleading, we are begging, we are suffering. The suffering is too much. You know, suffering can kill a human being. We beg the government, we beg the federal government, Tilibu our ogah, our fed, our head of state. We are begging. This federal government should look to our aid. We are dying. After now, our people are dying every day, sick, die, no drugs, no food, no anything. We sleep, no mosquito turn to protect mosquito, we just sleep, we suffer for the bush from that on the fourteenth to today. We are pleading the government to look to our aid. We are begging, we are pleading, we are dying. Government, I better look to our problem, I beg. Thank you.
Thank you. So the youth leader, I'm aware that the UTU youth leader is here, the national youth leader, I believe? Okay, youth president, youth president. So we know that we have indigenous of Okwama who are not resident here, who have also heard about what has happened. What information do you have concerning what has happened? And what information are you taking to the people of Okwama who are not here? And how have you been able to rally around the people, you know, since this incident happened? Please come and speak with us. And we're also informed that the lawyer representing the community, I believe, is also here. We would hear from the lawyer after the youth president.
Okwama do, Okwama do. Uh, I am activist blessed Ugure, the president of Ourobo Progress Junior, Youth Wing Worldwide. Uh, it's painful that our people suffer for the pains of what they know nothing about. Our people are bearing the consequences of nothing, of what they know nothing about. On March fourteenth, from all indications, it shows that our people were set up for some, by some wicked persons whom I have seen our people are threatened, or the development of our people are threatened to their own self. These are peace-loving people who has been here even far back before nineteen forty. They have been existing, Okwama community has been in existence. You saw our elder who came here to describe how we migrated to this place and we have lived here peacefully without having issues with anyone. On, is it April nineteen thirty-six or there about? This put between the land boundary between Okwama and Akubana was right and the judgment was given. And since that day to this day, the Okwama people has lived peacefully with their Kubana community without issue. Now look at the environment. When you come since the issue of on the fourteenth, this place has become a disaster. Prior to this time, there was a report to us that one Patrick Loprouwantin has been boasting of trying to extinguish the people or the community of Okwama, that it has been a problem, this has been a problem since he relocated down to his community, making various verbal threats, making himself as god and all of the water coast. Telling the people that he has the government backing and he has also backing to destroy and to wipe out the Okwama community. But God bless our ancestors, God bless the, God bless our ancestors, that nothing of such can happen because we are peaceful persons. Now, when this thing happened, we call on government, we call on various persons. As the leader of Ourobo Youth Worldwide, it is my core responsibility to and cater for the welfare of Ourobo Youth all over the world. I called and I was in one of these channels, I don't really recall his name, and I spoke very well. Everybody thought we are very, very sorry that it happened. Nobody is proud of taking a life. Nobody is proud of taking a life. How much more of military personnel who have seen us protecting our boundaries, who have seen working night and day to keep us safe? And of such, you have the US people with social reputation to come out, look at them, these people. Do they look like people who we want to kill the flag? Not only why that if they do so, this community will be erupted? The answer is simple, no. This is a pure case of setup on the Okwama people. Thank God, by God's grace, we've called on the federal government, we've called on the government. I wouldn't say much, but the state government have tried his best, we want him to do more. Governor Sherif have tried, we must give it to him for all he have done, setting off IDP's camp, setting off going to Abuja to see how the military left Okwama and us coming back, but we still cry on our father, the hard-working governor of Delta State, to come back to Okwama and see how to help more, perhaps in Okwama. Not leaving the federal government out of this because reprisal attack all over the world is not accepted. Reprisal attack is not accepted. If this issue was done, what we expected was an investigation into this issue. Find the culprit, bring them to book and let them face the law. This is what we wanted, ain't no coming to destroy people. If you shut the community, there are people who are dead. Sorry, please, I will cut off, but let me use this opportunity to help the man that we have not been able to do. A lot of people are still there that are self-buried while the destruction was going on. Mothers, whole houses fall on top of them, are in these places, a lot of livelihood have been destroyed. People who may, who spent thirty-five years of their life in civil service to build a thing for themselves can never ever feed. Please, we call on the state government, we call on the federal government. We call on the federal government more to come and do because we've never saw the hands of the federal government in this matter. We want the federal government, we want NDC to sign their, what's it called? Their uh 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 material, relief material, NDC should do that. This is the reason why this commission was set up. We need relief material for these people. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you. Now, we know that the community leaders, representatives of the community have been in talks with the government, just like the youth president mentioned. We would like the lawyer who has been representing the community to please come forward and tell us where we are now in terms of talks and communications with the government. What has the government said and what has the Okwama community responded? What is the agreement between the two parties so far? Where are they supposed to go from here and what are they not supposed to do?
Good morning. But I'm Akokonoma Fire Esquire. I'm the lawyer representing Okwama Community in one, in two of the cases we have in the Federal High Court Wary. My discussion here, whichever thing I want to say here, is in relative to the lawsuit we are pursuing and not in discussion with government. Nigeria is a country ruled by law. Okwama Community is a community that works by the law. Is the law abiding society? It is regrettable that soldiers were killed in Okwama in what they termed as peace mission, which ordinarily ought to be the mission or the assignment delegated solely to the police. And it happens, unfortunate, on that day we heard soldiers were killed, evil community two people were killed. Then, as law-abiding citizens of this country, there are established law. And when there is a way of doing a thing, that thing must be done in that way. The laws of this country forbid going into self. That is why the Supreme Court, in the case of Ojuku versus the government of Lagos State, which is a local classical state, that nobody, nobody should resort to self-help. Okwama Community, in the face of what has befallen them, in the face of the humanity they suffered, in the face of the oppression and in the face of the annihilation, destruction, complete wiping out of the community, approached us as their legal representative and we have filed two suits on our side challenging the action of the military in Okwama. We are also telling the court to interpret to us. If there is a law in Nigeria which states that when a soldier is killed, then the answer, the thing the government ought to do is to go and destroy the community. The matter is lying before the Federal High Court Wary. And on the fourth of June, we are going to hear from the court. We have served the Nigerian military, there are other two cases making it a total four cases that the Okwama community has against the federal government. On the state, on the aspect of discussion or collaboration with the state government, we know, we learnt that the state government, they built a camp at Ewu for the people to relocate. Then also you can see for yourself in coming to this town. Look at the people you are seeing here, you pass through the terrain coming to this place. It is left for you to look at it if it was, if it is possible for these people to move to Ewu Camp, knowing fully the threat they face. This is questioned before the whole public.
Before you go, now people watching at home do not know what exactly the issues are, why these people cannot move to Ewu Camp. What we know, what people know is that, like you have mentioned, a camp has been provided for the people of Okwama Community. What is the reason why they are refusing to go to the camp? Why can they not go to the camp?
What the people have told us so far is the tracks of their ancestral land being taken over by their neighboring communities, which, which is manifest in the protests they go by those people saying that they don't want Okwama to ever come back, Okwama people to ever come back to this land anymore. That they want Okwama people to be relocated completely to Ewu area. And you know, having stayed in your place, having stayed away for two months, on the eighteenth, when they returned, they found persons in this community escalating the remains of the ruined. Even this morning when we entered into this, we saw women brandishing their cassava and farm produce that have been harvested while they were away just for two months. That is why they are saying that going to the camp, instead of going to a rather, a camp should be built here for them so that they can start to resettle their life easily. But the leadership of the community is in, is in discussion with the government on how they can resolve the seeming issue of going to the camp or not going to the camp. That is before them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, now, we were here, we were here yesterday, we met Mama. Mama, please come and tell us, this is what you tell us yesterday. As it didn't happen, how it take affect you yesterday? We see you yesterday, where you explain?
Okwama do, the government ya do, mi yena wa, ora na wa vi na. Be wa jena, awa wo magaga, buwe buliku la mane fa ekbeke, efukufi olena, efukufi awa, efukufi ene, efukufi eno. The government ti bika we blavaniya, awana mekbari nana, ma sa ya no, ma sa ya me wekma bawa. Awana adaba kaka inwa adabo, okpo ne na wa wo magaga, bebe ni bo ambilu lo, ami mu shavaniya. Arakpa robo, bika re, ashre lela re bole, la mane na kavale. Kama vokola kadi wuwe koke koke. Oja o, oja o, oja, government yo, oja o, oja o, oja, government yo, oja o, oja o. Tunubo, oja o, oja o, oja o. Hey, head of state eh, arado parobo in Nigeria, bika we blavaniyo. Oja vale fe mava o, awaniye fotu kavale, awasava wedyari te na o. Bika we blavaniyo, awe blavaniyo, are bole la mane kavale. Ka me wa ta o, odalijes okrisi aloba maniyo.
Thank you very much. Our Mama is explaining to us the suffering of the people, what our people are passing through, what they pass through in the forest. Now they have returned, you can see the effects of the forest on her legs. Most of them, they are sick, they need medication. They are crying to the federal government, the state government, to come to our rescue. You can't leave the people like this because so many people die in the forest, like just what I said the other time. About fifty people died in the forest. On that fourteenth, when the, when the shooting started, where they killed the military, we lost eighty-six persons here, Okwama Community. Plus the first three people they killed by the Okoloba people, Patrick. So we lost about one hundred and one persons. So the community is into suffering. So she's. Most of the people, they are sick. Most of the people that cannot come here, they are sick. That is why they are not here. Thank you.
Let's hear from this young lady we also saw yesterday with the child.
Okwama do, me ma okatota le tina estao nyo votu, olo Okwama. Wa me Okoloba na e tina, me Okoloba na fe se tina. Eh vuro Okwama e tina, Okoloba na jaya kanyan weha ne tina ko. Ah me Okoloba na fe se tina, tina yade weha ne. Iko ba na kene hana mane, eh mama e di koe ka e wuto e wu, sosha awa woli. Iko Okoloba ki ke ma e ke ka e ku fia, je wu e i wuto na, wuto e weha re eh. Eh wu sosha i wuto na, eh iko mama ne, imiye ne mama e koe e ngoma e kareho. Imi daka ma e koe e bo ba e wu ma e kareho, iko Okoloba na. Iko akukene, imi daka e koe koe e wali e wali e wu ma e koe ngoto. Eh vuro tamae na, ma e da ro ka e li kunu wa twamae, wuto ba mae na. Eh mama li xe e wu ami amla fo, ka e li e kunu ka wa twamae, wuto ba mae na, ma e woi na. Ah ma e woi ka iko Okoloba na, e wuto e wu na, eh wu sosha e wu e wuto ye na. Ah wa iko me ti, wa ni ko e Okoloba na, eh biye ne vuro to ye na. Eh mama e di koe ko, ka e ka li kunu, ka e ka wuto ye, ka e sa bo ke e wami. Eh mama na meje ma e wa, ah meje ma e ba, onena na ge ni koe bu wu e wali wa. Iko bu i biye re, aje ma e ta so ke da ma na, iko bu i guru, aje mi biye fo. Iko me ti, o na odo yo Okwama o, iko me ti pa o ma na odo yo Okwama o. Iko ba ne hana mane, eka kavale e wu ma e kareho. Iko po du ko, imi daka e wu ma e kareho, na ko oja government.
Thank you very much. What our sister is saying, she's complaining about the creek. The creek we have, we call Uriewo. That creek is where, is where our people are doing farming. But this nearby community, this nearby community called Okoloba, they have never let our women to rest. They always come to attack our people with guns, every time. She's pleading with the federal government, the state government, they should come to our rescue. They should come and do something about the boundary. We have a boundary, but this was already encroached boundary into Okwama land. We don't know what to do to them. She's crying that they should, government should come so that we can able to be freely walk in our creek. That is only where our women went to kill fish and our farm work. Both, most of their crops, the cassava and the potato, are already harvested by this Okoloba people. There is a woman in Okoloba called Martina and other women, they are the leader in Okoloba women, leading the fellow women to go and uproot every cassava they come and have, and the potato. There are many. Please, she's pleading with the state government to come and do something about it. Okwama, they are peaceful people. They don't want any crisis anymore. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We saw some people, just before we wrap this up. Earlier, some women and other people were complaining about their farmlands. Do we, can we have somebody from them, who was, one of those women who was crying and complaining about the farmland? They are, they are the ones standing behind, behind the church right there. They brought some of their produce complaining that people have been stealing them, uprooting them. Who are the people who have been stealing and uprooting if they can explain to us? So that while we pass on the message to the authorities, they know who exactly they can hold responsible for these issues. Let them explain to us. Let them explain to us what exactly has happened, what they were complaining about this morning, what they were crying about.
You can, you can see the line of the women that are coming?
We see now this morning they complain about your farm, what is happening for the farm, what is be all this, what is carry, what is be the problem, what is they shout this morning?
Thank you everybody. We hear to complain, we are crying with the women of Okwama community. There be suffer since that of the 14th, that incident happened, we slept in the bush, we are not be resting. Our children are sick, even the one that talked recently, her daughter is not well. The pigkin is very, very sick and our crop, people uproot our potato, our cassava, all these cassava tuber that you see here is the one they uproot as they pursue, they pursue them, they run, leave them. All this is potato they uproot them, see cassava that they uproot in our farm. Our peppers they pluck all, when we went there to take, they will not see anything. So we are suffering, we are hungry, no money to buy anything, no crop for us to harvest. What, what will we do? How can we survive? Government, plead oh, we plead, we plead, come to our aid. Thank you.
Ladies, as yet man, I greet all of owner and I greet government. As you they see me, everybody know me say I be madagadi. Even Okoloba people, they know me say I be madagadi for Okwama. I got, I get thirty-three bags of gari, one I never sell. As you see happen, Okoloba people, they pack all the gari finish. See our farm, pretty farm where we get, you know say when it go thief. You know they feel they carry the whole things when it finish, so they fall for it. See the ones went for for root, where they run leave. And we, as we there inside bush, I get with one, that they call a meroma. The other one, that they call a moh, two of there, they done it several years. So as we do there, they suffer that too much. These two children, they are making plan, I don't know. Two of there, they make plan, they don't know. They, the one where they follow, they hear them. Tell me say mommy, these two children, they they plan no. I say what did they they plan? Say, instead of this, they they go die. I heard they they say no, don't know that not true. So I be, see these children, they eat what they not supposed to eat inside that bush, inside that forest. And before see, this one they climb, my belly, my belly, my stomach, my stomach. These children, they start to purge, no way to give their demeritcy. And these two children, I meet these two children, everybody know, they are what this thing. You know this creek, this creek night be this riot. My father, my, my great grandfather, that they call him Nini. And he tell my great father that this creek night we follow come. They they call him Uriewu, because now Uriewu get and now Uriewu come from. And he tell me about the history, my father could tell me how the creek be and we know say now our creek. Because of this creek, Patrick, before we they live to Okoloba fine, with peaceful, we they live there. He get one man, one, he so called man, where they they call him Opi. Where there for, yeah, where Patrick build that shiram. Now Okwama stranger, the man is from Ahmed. If you allow me, we not go Ahmed, go house of that man, you go tell say be Okwama stranger, now that place. When this man start to get money, we are living as brothers and sisters before. When this man start to get money, they call big problem. Pursue us for our whole creek, where our boss go fish, they go carry, build them, carry their nets, carry their boat take. Suffer, now so they suffer us and we don't tire. Now our community does this work, we they sleep under nine a ground, we don't know say what they for ground, where they just they start petition for that, where they say now, now when we call that thing. I beg, we need help. May they call build this community for us. May they carry mattress call give us, may they carry food call big us. I beg, we plead now, we plead. I beg, may government call help us. Thank you. This uh, this matter where happen so, I be one of them, when they hope for Okoloba, they tie me down. Patrick, certain people call share the boat, where would they carry, go eh, market. They call search out the whole boat, where they search out, they call they select Okwama people they take. Where they select reach me, where they drop me for guy, they they use cutlass. Everything they tell they whip me at, even there yes so, and now they feel they waka. All my leg they pay me, all my back they pay me, even though the head, they see they tire, now I make I pull the net so. So, so the way they call that, the way they call catch us for the Okoloba, they call tire us go the shiram. Where they carry us to reach the shiram, they call they use, they tie my leg with my hand for back. Say they call they use cutlass, they, they measure, say no we serve our last prayer. That day, if you see was that day, ha, we not even to say God, we are go even that life today to talk. The man, the way there and among us that day, about seven, Patrick is called, carried the etta boat. They carried the go the shiram go kill. After he kill, they finish, now he run come back again. Say now made I put, made I put all the old women again, made I see carry they go. As they tie us, where they they roll us, they go the boat. Now one man, I not know, now God said that man come hit us, I not know where the man from come from. Send me for these women there, said another they kill man, they not they kill women for fight. Say if they kill women for fight, say the team go come by fire them. Made I need us, now they call need us that day. As they need us, they they whip us so, mash it, they they mash us so. This say where the barber today so, now Patrick is a people there, now they whip him. Now I make I the barber, now they plaque my head before. But if you are, because it is that the way the thing happen so, and now they feel they plant the head, they call they know how they go down. May please they they enter, now wait it Patrick do us. Please we beg us, may call help us, we messing with food for us for this Okwama, we then suffering for this town.
Before I go, different people now, don't they talk about this Patrick, Patrick, Patrick. Saying I say government, nobody know who this, know where in the. Who be the Patrick, where in the, who in be, who Sabian, what he report this case to government? Nobody for the committee, Patrick now, member of this community or other community?
Patrick is a former DG of Mimasah, the time of good Lord Jonathan. Thank you, Patrick.
So, so wait.
Since that very day, when he just come from returning of uh, whether Mimasah, eh? They say now they control Mimasah. So once he just come, he come without show no. Then they are said, those who they go, they both say, he say who get money, anything when want do, now they do. But for us, we not get money oh, he to say we get money before. The way when he make collection, they destroy this community, you not go feel happen like that. As you they see me for here, eh, I be chairman of uh, our meeting, eh, cooperative meeting. Three hundred and sixty-thirty millions, now, now they carry from my, the one when we deliver people. When I even there yes so, only the taking of that money, when our people go home me, eh, I don't even want fetch. Eh, now only one person go pull human before this kind condition. And Patrick, well, now God go pay and wait it they do so, because not be our human, not be our community person. Not, it not come from Okwama.
Okay, thank you. We don't know who Patrick be, but New Central Television, as we come here, we very open. If Patrick or anybody with Sabian, know what happen, here what is they happen, may they come follow us so that we can hear from the other side, make we know exactly what is they happen, who this person be and what is be the interest for Okwama community. And if truly any of these allegations, whether are true, whether not be true, when they come follow us talk, make you know how to take be. So far, we don't hear from the people. Uh the thing where we, where we want talk, the government not to say they don't create camp for people for Okwama. Say if we now go that camp, say all this attack no good day. Say eh, they go, they go feel provide food, when I go chop, feel provide medicine, when I take, take off and accept. So before we go, who ask now, why we now no want go the camp? Say we now go go the camp, we now no go go the camp. Why you no want go the camp?
To the question that you ask, that government want to build camp for us at Ehwu land, why we don't want to go to that camp? The answer is this, we don't want to go to that camp. It says that if we go there, that say that camp at Ehwu to Okwama community is dissatisfied. If we go there, Okoloba people, they will see uproot our crops that remain. The one that they don't put, remain, they will uproot the rest. That is why we don't want to keep far from this our crop, because this are the one that we will survive with later. So we want camp to be built for us at the back of the community, so that we should be guarding our crop, we should be harvesting our crop. Or the government will build our community for us. Thank you.
But before they build the camp, where are you going to stay? Before they finish building the camp, where are you going to stay?
Well, we see manage, as we see manage. Or they then build the camp at the back of the community.
You want to continue staying here until they build the camp at the back of the community? You want to stay here until they build the camp at the back of the community? Alright, thank you. Uh mothers of Okwama, thank you so much. We don't hear from you now. Thank you very much. Alright. We don't they finish this comment, this uh town hall meeting, but before we go, is our elder, very quickly, one minute, elder, please tell us.
Uh Okwama do, all Nigerian people, I thank you people very well. For my side, I thank our governor. We not hope say we go enter this community today before, like this before. But immediately we hear say the soldiers are removed from the community, we can't feel very happy. Anything when we lost, we they pray for the government, we they beg government, say may they come build our community for us, because we there in hard condition now. Many people lose their childrens, sickness, they even they attack some now. So the only thing, we can talk now, we can settle for this our service church or to their build their, the camp, then mostly, made then government. I not say, the, the, the work go there though, but not you know the hard for government, may they come build this community. People when a guy has, may they get their own house. Mostly our primary school, when they destroy, we can't, we can't defeat say, it may be Nigeria people, no one say make uh, do that they move forward for this country, it not good to destroy primary school. Uh secondary, they can just level the community to, to square one, so do not they happen like that. And we not get quarter with military people, we not get quarter with federal. If two community even get problem, eh, uh federal go come destroy the other community. Very surprising something, waiting I never see for my eye, uh for, for my life, now I can see this yes so. So you not feel happen like that oh, may government come build our community for us oh, I beg more. Thank you.
We don't hear everything we happen, boy, you know, you know go good, make we just hear for radio, they watch and for television. Make we carry about two leg, Wakago Okwama community, we see the people eye to eye. Make we see where they they stay, see the house where they say they don't destroy. See the school where not they again, see their health center where they don't destroy. Maybe we go here, maybe we go see for herself, what is happen, go and go for that place, so that we go fit the story well. Now we got nice stand here with us now, now you go follow us talk last before we go. In name now Mister Kyode Akintemi, now you be the managing director of New Central Television and now you be the editor in chief of the company, I beg more na clafan, now you carry us come here. Thank you.
Me too, I go talk. Okwama do, I no hear you. Okwama do? Ah ha, ah ha. You know say yesterday when I come here, I say, if you no talk, your problem, it go there with you forever oh. So as I stand here now, I won't hear noise from those way don't suffer, I won't hear noise shout, say you don't suffer oh. If you no suffer, no talk oh, I won't hear, oh yeah, anybody here don't suffer. Okay. Alright, alright, no, it's okay, it's okay. You know say. We no fit complete, we no fit complete this program. We no fit complete this program. Oh yeah, make we sit down for one second. We no go fit complete this program. If the people wait there at home and all the rogue people around the world, we go watch this one on television, on social media. If they no see you now face, as soon as stand up like this, then go see all of now. Because camera don't carry out, then go see you. Okay, okay, okay. The thing we carry us come here. Okwama do? Ah ha. The thing we carry us come here, now see what is happen for here. Because see, it don't take past thirty years, it don't past thirty-five years where I don't be journalist. I de report story, I de do interview, I de talk to president, president Jonathan. I don't sit in front of him, we do interview, media chat, I de there. Media chat, I de there. So I don't talk to president, talk to governor, I don't talk to minister. But when things happen for Nigeria, I won't take my eyes, go see. So that the time where I go get opportunity, maybe one day, I go sit with governor Sherif Oborovory. I go tell him say, me oh, maybe say then tell me oh, I take my eye see Okwama myself, I go there, my koro koro like this, I see him. One day, I fit meet president Inumbu, I go tell him, the president, you say now you be president of all of Nigeria, not just for one state oh, for all of Nigeria. I go tell him where, what is I see for here and the thing where I see for here, he pain my heart, he pain me. Because yesterday, I de here, I talk to people where be say, then don't spend thirty years, thirty-five years. Walk all their life, come put all the money together, build one small house for this place. They say then don't retire, then come build house for Okwama. Then get small farm, they plant cassava and so on. plant cassava, and so on. And then, some soldier talks say, some people here, now you kill soldier. So for that reason, all the things we then build for thirty-five years, this person say you no know anything about person, wakey soldier oh, in hand no day there oh, in picking no day in Volvo, but I can't suffer, the house where it take thirty-five years work to build, the house don't go. And nothing they, even the cassava, some people from another village, then don't uproot them. Is that good? And it is not just you here that I'm asking. I am saying it to all Nigerians, and everybody around the world. If anyone works for thirty-five years or more, and builds a house, do they deserve to lose it because some people were said to have killed soldiers? And I'll be the first to say, absolutely, nobody must touch our soldiers, because they live a life of sacrifice to, for all of us. That's how important our soldiers are to us. They put their lives on the line for all of us. So nobody from within this country, enemies can try, but we always pray that enemies will not prevail over our soldiers. Is anybody saying amen? Good. So if we don't want enemies to prevail over our soldiers, we too don't want to then kill them ourselves. But what is important is, that if soldiers are killed, and they were indeed killed, we yet to know who were the perpetrators of this act, the question will be, first, do we need to have an attack that destroys the entire community, not one building left? I saw a child, please, where is that woman that spoke? Bring that baby to me, I want that baby, bring your baby to me. Because I saw a baby, that it's heartbreaking for me to see this child that is extremely malnourished. Oh, sorry baby, sorry, sorry. This child is extremely malnourished, sorry, sorry. This child is not, and I can feel the temperature of this child. It's hot. I will appeal personally, that every Nigerian, especially the governor of Delta State, should do something, because the health center has been completely razed to the floor, it's rubble. There is no medication in this place, there is no help for the people, there are people who are struggling, who are suffering, children are sick and they may die. I pray no child will die here. I pray nobody will lose anyone anymore in this place. But I am asking the governor of Delta State, the president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, to see this child that I'm carrying as an example of the suffering in this land, and will come there to their aid. Please come to their aid, please take the baby. I am extremely disturbed, I am pained, pushed to point of near tears, because I see a need. This is a humanitarian situation, and we need everybody to come round, not just New Central, everybody. Newspapers, television, radio station, come here and amplify the voices of the people here. Wherever we see suffering in one part of Nigeria, it resonates across to every other part of the country, and it resonates across the entire African continent. Because everywhere we go, let me turn my back and show you who New Central stand for. What did we say this is? Africa first. We care about this continent, and we care about the people, and our appeal is that our government, local, states, national, and then across the continent, will care about our people. Everything we need on this continent is available to us, either on our ground, in our water, in the air, above the surface. So we need to make sure that we develop our people to not suffer again. That is my personal appeal, that is our appeal from New Central, and we pray that every single one of you will be fine. We will do all within our powers to support you, to amplify your voice, that's the best we can do. And we hope that we can be the bridge for people who are either Irobo, or Deltans, or Nigerians, irrespective of their tribe, will want to come to your aid and help the children, help the women, help the elderly, help every single individual here. Thank you very much. Okwama do? Okwama do?
Eh, as we don't they go, we are now wrapping up eh, this program. We want to say thank you to all the people for Okwama, all our elders, thank you, all the women, thank you, all the children self, thank you, our president and the youth, thank you, to everybody where they watch us, we want to say thank you to all of now. And we see one remind when I say, New Central we there here for the truth, now make we carry us come. So, anybody where know anything, where we feel take, help the people for Okwama, any information, and if Patrick, when I don't talk about also, they watch us, make you can't tell us the things where they happen, the thing where happen, as we say, everybody calling name, make you can't tell us as it take be. Anybody where get information about the thing where happen for Okwama, we go help government, take charge the people where they responsible for this badness we happen for here, and we go help rebuild this community back, as it take be before, may even better pass it take be before. Want to say thank you again, my name now Bernard Akede, we say thank you, soon now join us for this New Central Town Hall series. Okwama do? Okwama do? Okwama do? Ona, thank you.